I’m going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for July 19th, 2017. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker’s card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience, and while the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the Chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin.
Here.
Commissioner Jagiello.
Here.
Commissioner Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Jagiello, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communication is the time set aside during the Planning Commission for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Would anyone like to speak on an item not on the agenda? I have a speaker’s card here for Laura Woods. That’s not for...
It’s for the...
Oh, thank you, okay. Progress is being made. I actually would like to take the opportunity during this public communications to note that we received a number of emails to the commission in the past week from people who were upset with our decision at the previous meeting about the property at 334 East Ojai Avenue, and I just would like to say to those people, I wish they had been at our meeting and commented in person instead of criticizing our decision after we had made it. But, we will move on. Next items are the consent items. All matters listed on the consent calendar be considered routine by the governing bodies and will be enacted by one motion on the form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless before the governing body votes on the motion to adopt. Specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. And we have two consent items, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission June 21st and the minutes of the regular meeting for July 5th. Commissioner Nolan?
All right, I’ll make a motion that we adopt the meeting, excuse me, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of June 21st, 2017.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we add July 5th to that?
I actually want to make a comment about...
Oh, you want to pull July 5th, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So could we have a vote, please, roll call, on July, June 21st?
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Okay. So then you would like to make comment on the July 5th meeting?
Excuse me, yes. And it would be on page three of six, and basically it was about our commission deliberation and the comment that I made, and I don’t feel like the comment that was placed in the minutes captured my discussion verbiage.
It’s rather terse.
It’s rather terse, and I just wanted to say for the record that I started my comment out by saying, number one, that the building wasn’t physically going to be changed, number two, I pointed out the compatibility of the paint color that was being proposed with the arcade, and also the stone work with the compatibility on the west side of the arcade on Signal Street, and that I was not opposed to the contemporary features, and I felt like they were a good transition between the arcade and other buildings in the downtown area, and that generally captured what my comment was.
Can you say that in one sentence?
Do you like to modify the minutes?
Do I need to make that consolidated?
We can work it out.
You can work it out, okay. Thank you.
All right. Given that modification, would you like to make a motion to approve this with your...
Sure. I’ll make a motion that we adopt the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of July 5th, including my...
As amended.
As amended, and that’s it.
All second.
All right. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Okay. So now we’re going to move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Corbin, could you start us off there? Ex parte contacts and site visits and so on?
I visited the sites and had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you.
I visited both sites, had no ex parte contact.
I visited both sites, had no ex parte contacts.
Commissioner Nolan?
I visited both sites and also did not have ex parte contacts.
I visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. I’m very familiar with both sites and have had no ex parte contacts. So we will now move on to the public hearing items. The first is item three, tentative parcel map TPM 1502 to divide two parcels into three at 712 Drown Avenue. These is assessor parcel numbers 0220052030 and 0220050110. The general plan land use designation of the site is medium density residential, and the zoning classification is single-family residential RO. The owner applicant is Stephen Glenn, the representative is Robert William Company, Ben Turner. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you’ve indicated, this is a request to subdivide an existing property consisting of two parcels into three parcels at 712 Drown Avenue. The property does contain an existing residence and several outbuildings. The residents will be retained, and some of those outbuildings will be demolished as part of the ultimate development of this property. This property is merely a subdivision of, or a parcelization of property, does not involve a development proposal at this time. Any development of future homes on either of the two newly created lots will be subject to this city’s zoning ordinance, which would require a zone clearance and/or a development plan review, depending on the type of structure that’s actually proposed. The two new lots will be located behind the existing residence on the east side of Drown Avenue, and will be serviced by a new private street of 18 feet wide that will run along the north property line and provide access to the two new lots. The combined area of the existing property is just over one acre, and the proposed subdivision meets the city’s general plan and zoning ordinance in terms of minimum lot size and lot dimensions. The Planning Commission previously heard, or did have some discussion on this project, and the applicant responded to comments which involved a redesign of the project, and staff finds that it substantially complies with the city’s subdivision ordinance and zoning code. We have provided to you this evening a revised resolution. The resolution largely strikes language that applies to the actual development of the lots themselves, that is, the eventual construction of the two single-family residences. So, most of those references have been deleted, and the remaining references really just address the subdivision of the property, eventual grading related to the recordation of the final map, and the like. I would also like to recommend that in your revised resolution, as I reread it, I would like to recommend that you delete conditions number three and five, as they, again, apply to the development of the property itself, the eventual property, eventual construction of the homes, rather than the subdivision of the property itself. There is, as I said, there is an existing structure, residence, on the property. It was included in a historic survey that was conducted in 2010, but was not actually officially adopted by the city. It is one of several resources the city uses to consider historic values of property. Also, we had a recent consultation with, under AB 52, with Native American group, and as a result of that consultation, they are recommending that there be a subservice observation when grading does occur on the property. There’s no timing as to the development of the property, there’s no indication of timing as to when grading activities might occur. Again, this is merely a parcelization. There is no development proposal at this time. Either or both of those parcels could be developed independently of one another, and we don’t have any indication of timing on that. There’s some discussion in your staff report regarding the development aspects of the eventual construction of single-family homes, but again, the action before you this evening is the actual conversion of a two-lot property into three parcels. With that, we’ve had some discussion with the applicant regarding the revised conditions of approval. I believe they have some comments to make. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you. Mr. Winter, I agree with deleting condition number three because it talks about floor area ratio setbacks and such. Number five talks about grading and demolition, and the applicant may wish to do some of that before beginning any development of the back property. Would it hurt to leave number five in?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Quilisi, the issue with this one is that the condition required the demolition and the grading to occur prior to final map. Number one, I don’t know why that...
Oh, okay.
...why that condition is constructed that way, because grading never occurs prior to the recordation of the map. And the applicants, they could choose to demolish the building right now, or they could choose to demolish it 20 years from now.
And either requires a demolition permit, which is a separate transaction from...
That’s correct.
...the resolution. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Could we hear from the applicant on this?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So actually, I know that Matt, and this has been talked about already, but really, my presentation to you is the sum of my discussions in the community where I’ve been approached by people to discuss the project, and there’s been some confusion. So I wanted to really clear up what the scope of work was, because people have seen a, what we call a tentative map. By the way, we’re governed by the Ojai Municipal Code and also the California Subdivision Map Act. So that requires us as to how we prepare these plans. So they come into two portions. This is the tentative map, and really, this contains far, far more information on it than the map that would go to be recorded, which is simply, there’s signatures on the front, and the second page shows the easements and the parcel lines. It’s a very Spartan page. That’s actually what we get out of this. Everything on a tentative is really showing not development plans, but developability. We have to prove to the planning department that it could be developed per the Ojai Codes. So the footprints you’ve seen there don’t reflect any floor plans that I’ve drawn. That’s why there were no elevations or any kind of plan for you to look at, because not only will be a separate submittal at a later date, the client hasn’t asked me to do any of that. So the footprint you see doesn’t demonstrate his goal for the parcel, it demonstrates to the planning department how I could meet the requirements for a subdivision with them being normally processed. And of course, I have to show as best I can the maximum that we can without triggering something that we don’t want to perform. So in this case, we don’t want to have to go through what they call MS4, which is something you do, you know, a stormwater review for large projects. So we want to keep the amount of impermeable area down, so we make choices as to how we pave the driveway. Permeable paving is shown on the tentative plan. On the building footprints, we show the footprints stretched out as far as we can to where the setbacks are, without going above a certain area that would cause a problem with planning. We’re showing what you could do, not what he’s going to do. So really, the development, the parcel map that you see before you is not going to grant us any development rights. We want to grade, we have to come back. If we want to build a house, we have to come back. We go through the same process. If we do two stories, we come back and see you, and you get to look at the architecture and the colors. Everything comes at a later date. So really, the scope of work is, on this project for me to stand before you, there’s not much to present, there’s no slideshow, because it’s actually a technical document that ends up being just parcel lines recorded with the county recorder. After that, we come back the same as any other project. So really, I’m really here for questions today. I don’t have much to show you and nothing to look at, no materials boards. It’s just, this is the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Mr. Turner? Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I see very clearly the division of two parcels into three that are not all contiguous with the originals. I’m curious, is it the long-term goal here, having three parcels, to sell two of them? Or is the current owner of the land that comprises the three parcels planning to keep those and allow people to build, or build him/her herself, on the property? What’s...
I asked the same question, my motivation being different. I was looking for work. Nothing. He...
No plans, other than the parcelization?
Other than the parcelization. So I’ve quizzed him, do you want me to look at a plan? Do you have an idea for a floor plan? Are you going to sell these? Nope, just want to get through this process. It’s been a long time, and at this point, he hasn’t stretched his mind out to the next stage.
Mm-hmm.
Hasn’t given me a timeline, and I don’t have any more work after this from this client.
Okay. Well, I’m sure you will. Thank you very much.
But they would be putting in the access road, right? Is that part of this?
Um...
Or not?
Not until it’s needed for the further development.
Oh, okay.
So in actual fact, when we come back for that, that will...
So if you subdivided these lots, you wouldn’t necessarily, they wouldn’t all necessarily have access until that road was built, right?
Until the road was put in, yeah, which could come at a later date, and which actually we’d be coming back for, because even though it’s relatively, you know, surface-type work in Ojai, we have to come back for permits on that kind of, it’s ground disturbance. So we come back again, yeah.
Yeah. I had another question about that access road, too. I didn’t see a fire department turnaround anywhere, is that something you...
Yeah, we received fire department approval. The criteria is that we have to get the fire department from the edge of the lot, they have to be within 100, 250 feet of the access point from the public right-of-way to the beginning of the parcel. And we met that, so they signed it off with no turnaround.
So they’re not going to bring a truck in there necessarily?
No, they would, they actually have, I mean, I know that they don’t, this number that I’m quoting now isn’t something that you get as a standard, but on the trucks, they typically carry 700-foot of hose, I’ve been told. So they look to having a turnaround on a large parcel before a building so they can keep away from the building, park the truck, and fight the fire, but when it’s a public right-of-way, and there’s a road like this, they generally wouldn’t want to go down there.
I see. Great. Any other questions for Mr. Turner? Thank you. I do have a number of speaker’s cards on this, so I can hear from the public. First is Dan Lucashevitz.
Good evening. I dropped off a folder to each of you with some pictures and information regarding 712 Drown, and 806 Grand, and 804 Grand, and 802 Grand. And what it is, is the FEMA flood map, the current one. The, then we have a enhanced view of the parcel, encircled in red, and that is 806, 802, 804. It involves approximately six houses in this flood control area. Then we have pictures of my backyard during this last storm. I get this water from the wet, from the east side, and I really don’t want any more water from the west side. And then we have this question of this storm drain. This is a picture of the storm drain that runs between 802 and 804 Grand. And if you look at the map that Ben Turner came up with, his initial water feature here is just totally unacceptable, because the water will not go down the drain. It’s going to run into this wall and splash right over into 804 and 802. And you can see the, this is an 18-inch-deep trench by two feet wide. It was put in by the county somewhere along the line, the Ventura County Flood Control District, when Grand Avenue was rebuilt. It’s a really important part to drain this entire area that where you’re planning on building these houses. So while you can build the houses there, I’m sure, you have to, it seems like the county needs to be involved in reassessing this trench and where it should go. The water runs directly down the middle of the parcel, and you try to tell it that it’s going to go over to the side now, after, I’ve been there 28 years, and it never has, I think you’re going to run into a problem. So I think the main thing is that maybe the county’s flood control should look at that before any parcels are divided, so they can decide whether there should be a trench down the center to allow the water to run freely. This water comes from the top of the mountain down there, you know, all the way down and collects right in Drown, and it has no place to go but through our houses right there. So it’s really important that the water is contained somehow, and curving around like that, I just don’t think that works out too well. And coming to a blind, you know, coming to a flat spot and having to make a left turn to go out to Grand Avenue, I don’t think water will cooperate with that too well. So I think that the county should assess where the water should go on that. And if you look at the pictures of 712 Drown, the backyard, you’ll see that there was approximately four inches of water. You can see the drain, where the drain comes through the fence, the fence is kind of hiding it, and then this was, this is all about four inches of water, and this is after the rain stopped, you know, was, had lightened up. This isn’t the worst part of the rain, this is during the day. Also, there’s no access. We have to have access to get to this thing to clean this out if it causes, you know, it plugs up almost every year. And Laura’s property has been blocked off. There was a gate there that you could get out and open these, you know, clean this opening out, and that’s been blocked off by this fence. So it just seems like it’s a problem that somebody needs, you know, it’s more than just a planning thing, or splitting the parcels, or somebody has to have a trench down there or decide where the, the owner can’t just decide where the water’s going to go. So that’s my story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a card here from Charles Castenhoff, Castillo. I’m not sure if I pronounced that correctly.
My name is Charles Hoff, and I’m here...
Sorry.
...on behalf of myself and my wife, and...
I see.
We, okay? We own the property at 710 Grand Avenue, and my wife is a local realtor, has been for many, many years, and she feels the property will be devalued as a result of development on any of those properties. I personally have drainage issues. I’m a graduate civil engineer, worked for the Department of Interior as a civil engineer, project engineer, surveyor, and storm drain designer. I worked for the City of Los Angeles as a B-Permit Plan Check Inspector, checking subdivision design, storm drains, and sewers. And I’ve also been 30 years as a construction superintendent in Ventura County. My problem is, currently, we own this property, it’s item number 7, 70, right in the middle of the developed property. We flood every year, and it doesn’t make any difference how much water we get into. As a result of the development, it’s going to increase the amount of flooding we do get, and it’s between four to six inches. And that amount of water, it’s not just coming from this property, it’s coming from adjacent streets. The Drown Avenue is essentially a flood control channel, and that water comes down there and floods. And there’s all these little driveways coming off of it, and all that water sheet flows across the properties, and incrementally, it adds up and comes down right in the middle of our property, which the previous speaker said, that’s where it all goes, and for sure it does. The problem with the road at the top is it is built with a minimum flow from Drown Avenue into the property. Most, so what’s going to happen then, as it crests in the street, the water is going to get into that driveway and be forced into the property and flood the property as a result of the street. It should be going the other way. The property ought to be built up and kept to keep the water out. Let’s go on the other, bringing it off the street and bringing it into the property. That’s wrong. I hope you’ll consider those things when you make up your decision. We recommend rejection.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hoff. I have a card here from Laura Woods.
My property is on one side of his and the other side of the first speaker, and I guess my message is, it can’t be business as usual. It’s my property that has the concrete trench in it that comes from that land, and I used to be able to go out there and take rocks away and so forth from the land that is under consideration. I can’t do that anymore, as was already stated. I’ve talked to two hydrologists, both one from the county and one from the state. And also, I want to reiterate a quote from our Casitas Water District guy, “Until we get significant inflow into Lake Casitas, we need to remain vigilant in our water conservation efforts,” said Ron Merkling, a public affairs resource for Casitas Water. Our lake, even after winter rainfall, is still 43 percent capacity. Ojai is still under serious drought conditions. And my point is that even for two houses, why are we adding more new houses when we don’t have enough water as it is? I am in a neighborhood where middle-aged, healthy oak trees are having to be removed because there’s no groundwater and they die, and you must be aware of that. I mean, it can’t be business as usual here. In, with the hydrologist that I talked to, they both were quite similar in that they said 2018 could be a flood as well as more drought, and we have to take that into consideration. Our world has changed, and Ojai has changed, and we can’t, and we must take that into consideration as we’re adding new houses. Many people have given up their gardens, they’ve done a lot of things to save water, and we can’t promise water to other people when, you really can’t say you’re going to be able to deliver that. Okay, so that’s, let me, I’m all out of order here, but let me just say that the new homes should not be allowed, and certainly splitting the lot is not in the existence, is not in the interest of anyone who lives here, who’ve already given up their lawns and their gardens due to the drought. Are you ready to not only allow but require self-composting toilets and so that sewage is not put in our potable water? I mean, there’s so many things that could be thought about and discussed here prior to allowing new building in our city. Across the street from me, a new swimming pool was put in. That, to me, is just an anathema to reality. The last time I spoke here about this same lot, land, and seemingly the same ownership that I don’t know about for sure, was about the view. I bought my house because of the view of the mountains, and I was twice in escrow with the people who sold that land, who had it for a long period of time. Somebody, you mentioned that the owner had it for a long period of time, so I’m assuming it’s the same group of people. And although I was in escrow twice and was willing to pay $60,000 to maintain that view, I fell out of escrow because of misrepresentations about several things, unrecorded loans and so forth. So anyway, I guess I should, and quickly, during normal rainfall years, the property is drained through an above-ground concrete trench that I have on my property, and I am concerned about that, because even with that trench that the county put there years ago, I can’t keep it clean so that all the water comes through, but in a good storm, it will still fill up and not only go onto my, into my other property there, but... but go into my neighbor's property and flood their yards as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Woods. You might be interested in item five on our agenda tonight, which is water wise ordinance that we're going to be discussing later on, so.
I'll try to stay.
It'll probably be really boring.
Not for me.
Okay. Dawn Theding.
Good evening, Dawn Theding. I reviewed the project when it went out in the, via email, for all those who received notification, which I very much appreciate from the city when the agenda comes out. I had reviewed the conditions of approval that, at that time. My understanding is that the conditions of approval have since been revised, and as this is a public hearing, I would request that those revised conditions of approval be provided to the public so that the public has the opportunity to review and comment on those revisions prior to any further action by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Winiger spoke about that in the beginning.
Yes, and we have copies of the resolution here.
You can, you can get a copy.
Oh, they're available. Okay.
Thank you, Dawn. And Moti De Nino?
My name is Moti De Nino. I live on seven oh eight Run. I'm just a neighbor of the property. I don't have a sophisticated argument that other people brought here. My argument is my quality of life. Moved to Ojai, bought this property five years ago. My wife grew up here. And one reason that I bought this property is because the, the view of the mountains that I have and the quality of life and the quiet that I have over there. Back then, when I was with the, when I bought the property, I was told that there was already resolution to hold any kind of development on this property, and this is one of the main reasons I bought it, because I knew that nothing is going to be there. Now, this process may just started, and they just, you know, dividing the parcels, but I'm sure there is a business motivation behind it, you know? You're not just doing it because of the heck of it, you know? Probably going to build there, and I don't know if there'll be two stories, one story, three units, or whatever it is. That will impact me, you know? I, I still want to, to maintain my, my quality of life over there, have my view to the mountains that I paid for. And I feel that that's something that it will interfere with that. That's kind of disturbing to me. That's my personal reason why I object there.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. De Nino. Thank you for coming and talking to us. That's all the speakers' cards I had. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Ben, I'll, I'll have you come up in a minute, Ben, but not now, I just want to make sure. Does anybody else wants to speak on the? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, I believe that's correct. And then, Ben, do you want to respond to some of these storm drainage questions?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The conditions of approval, just as a note for Dawn's comments, it's going to be a recommendation which will then go to City Council, so there will be an intervening time between that and the next hearing, that the public can see any modifications to the conditions, just if that's of any use. On the water itself, not stormwater but water supply, just wanted to point out that the applicant already has three water meters from Casitas, one for each lot. On the stormwater, the, the triggers or the, the law that we're looking at here would be, we're not allowed to add more than five thousand square feet of impermeable area to a project. Otherwise, we enter a new world, we go to Ventura County watershed protection, and there's a different kind of review. The way we avoided triggering that is, and we're talking about the, the, one of the, public mentioned the driveway, is the driveway is permeable paving. So that doesn't count. We're soaking water in there. The feature, the swale on the, on the side of the drawing going down here that was discussed. So the fall from the top to the bottom of this run, of this swale, is less than two feet. So relatively flat, which means not a great deal of surface water momentum. What we would have been allowed to have done would be just to put a concrete swale. So the client opted, we've got, there's a section BB that shows you, is a two-foot-deep swale, which is actually vegetated. So when water flows across vegetation, it is essentially cleaned up, especially at the sort of speeds we're talking about here. It sits, and it also percolates in. So further down, we have another detail, and you can see there's a three-foot-deep of rock underneath that section. Again, another chance for the water to percolate in. When we get to the head wall, that they said, well, there's going to be a problem with the water coming around this corner. The speed we're talking about with two foot of a lap distance is such, such a shallow slope, the difficulty would be to actually, in the event of a storm, to actually get it to flow at all. It would probably more likely soak in. And when it does get to the point where it's flowing, normally, that water, after it's been the first dirty wash, has come through, that water's cleaner. The head wall that captures the end, before the head wall, there's riprap. So that breaks the water's momentum, if there is any, before it hits the actual drainage channel that we're talking about. I've spoken to Ventura County, too, and they don't have any interest in the project because it, it doesn't meet any of their triggers. In fact, I couldn't submit to them. There's nothing I could do to hand this over to them and say, are you going to review my project for me? They've got no jurisdiction, they've got no interest. So it's difficult for me to sort of, you know, I, I understand that the neighborhood's going to have concerns, and you're here to listen to them. But on a technical point, I can just point out, the flow rates, the width of this swale, the depth of this swale, it's two feet deep. Hopefully, the, this is going to provide some mitigation. So, and as, as the comments about the water isn't going to flow down here, well, there is, if you can see, there's, there's, when the development occurs, there would be graded, so it would have to have positive flow. Nobody wants to have, we have to have, create a situation where the water flows away from buildings and to a swale. Our, our legal requirement is, we don't change where the water comes onto a property, we don't change where it leaves a property. That's our control point. That's what we discussed with building safety over two and a half years ago when we first started this project with the prior building official. So that's all the comments I have on, any questions that you have?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will now discuss this project. Is there discussion, or would someone like this?
Yeah. I'd like to ask Matt a question. Right now, there's existing two lots, right? So they're both legal, right?
Correct.
So he can build, he can demolish the first house and build another house there, and he can build a second house without having to come before the planning commission, as long as that house is not two-story and does not, does adhere to the zoning clearances, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and we're also, what, what the applicant is asking for is a subdivision of, adding a third lot in there with no development criteria. So on the drainage part of it, is it not also true that they have to submit a grading plan along with their permit? And that grading plan would then have to be, would be subject to many of these concerns as well?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that is correct. In fact, condition number twenty-seven, even though there's preliminary information in your plan regarding the, a proposed drainage solution, that will be subject to final, a final study and calculations provided by a registered civil engineer prior to the issuance of a grading permit and prior to any development on the property itself. Condition, and that, and grading is covered by condition number twenty-nine. Condition number nine requires the maintenance of the, any future stormwater treatment or conveyance improvements by the future owners of the, the property. So we're talking about one net increase in a, one net dwelling unit increase here. And right now, the drainage is entirely sheet flow, whereas under the new plan, it would be channeled, it would be hopefully treated in such a way as there's increased percolation, and there should be no net increase in the off-site discharge.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anyone like to make a motion? Yeah, Mr. Quilisi.
I, excuse me. I just, I wanted, again, to, to address the topic of view. I live over on the west side of town, near the Presbyterian Church. I used to have a great view of the mountains from my property, or it was at that time my, my father-in-law's property. But a house was built in between, and there are trees that have grown up in between. And that's sad for me. But the fact is, I own the parcel, I don't own the view. When you buy a parcel here, you buy a parcel. You don't necessarily buy the view that goes with it. Because if there is empty property next to you, or anything between you and what you like looking at, it may change. And unless you own the property that you want to preserve the view of and keep it empty, it just doesn't make sense for us to say, no, someone else can't build there because it might disturb someone's view. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll move.
All right. Mr. Quilisi is going to make a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve tentative parcel map TPM fifteen oh two to divide, subdivide two parcels to create three at seven twelve Drown Avenue, understanding that no development is approved by this recommendation to the City Council.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second, make the second motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to confirm that, that includes the revised resolution with the omission of conditions number three and five.
Yeah, the, the revised resolution, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
No.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
No.
Vice Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Okay. This brings a long process to a
Motion carries. This item will be scheduled for a hearing before the City Council at a later date.
Yeah, so those of you who still have concerns about this, this will be heard at the City Council as well, so. All right, we're going to move on to item four, I believe. Item four is a tentative tract map, TTM seventeen oh one, to create airspace condominiums and design review permit, DRP seventeen oh two, revision to DRP thirteen dash eighteen to revise the pavement materials at six eleven Pearl Street. Says this parcel number oh two three zero one four one four three zero. General plan land use designation and the zoning classification of, of the site is village mixed use. Owner applicant is David Schuman, Grassman Village LLC. The representative is Randy Toder. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. There's two aspects to this request this evening. The first is a modification to the design review permit previously approved for this project to allow the substitution of paving materials. And the second is your consideration of a recommendation to the City Council regarding a tentative map to allow the units to be sold as condominium units. I'd like to first clarify that the commission's action with respect to the tentative map is a recommendation to the City Council, I mean, with, with respect to the, to the development review permit is a recommendation because the tentative map will automatically go forward to the City Council in the form of a recommendation from your commission. So that's a correction to both the staff report and the, the draft resolution. The subject property at six eleven Pearl Street is currently under construction, as indicated by your, by your staff report. It's a mixed-use project consisting of two buildings, which are currently under construction, as I've indicated. There's five live-work units, there are two commercial units and one residential unit that can, that make up the mixed-use project. The, your staff report indicates a, gives background on the project itself and the types of units and so on. And, of course, the project is consistent with the general plan and zoning, inasmuch as it has been previously approved by the, by the planning commission and City Council. The specific aspects of the, of the request before you this evening is that the tentative kind of map for condominium purposes would allow the sell, the sale of these units, both the commercial units as well as the residential units, instead of a rental project, which was previously, which was the original approval concerning the project. The second aspect concerns the substitution of, of paving materials. The applicant has indicated through a report by a soils engineer that percolation of the, of the site, the soil types would, would diminish the percolation potential. Therefore, the impermeable, the permeable paving that was originally part of the concept would be difficult to achieve the, the desired percolation intentions. So they are asking that, that be substituted for conventional paving materials. I've asked the applicant to address that particular aspect in detail, but that is the, the request that's before you this evening. Again, two parts. Consideration of a modification to the DRP to allow for impermeable paving to substitute for the original approval, and then the subdivision map for condominium purposes. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Winiger? I have a question. I just, I know when you're building condominiums, there needs to be certain conditions for the walls between the units. Is that, is that the case in the existing condition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My understanding, I did have a discussion with the building official concerning that. Apparently, the code requirements are similar for rental units now as they are for, for sale units. So there's one-hour separation that is required for, for sale, but it's also required for the rentals as well. So my understanding is that there would be no additional structural modifications necessary to comply with the condominium requirements for, for sale units.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Can we hear from the applicant?
My name's Randy Toder. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I took on the project after the owner purchased it. The reason for the change in drainage is because the existing approval was based on a percolation basin. The soils engineer, who was the previous soils engineer and still the soils engineer, said he couldn't recommend percolation for the site because it's too clay. You wouldn't get enough water to go in, and it would disturb any kind of paving that was put on top of it if you introduced water into a clay situation. What would happen is the paving would crack, or it would move and undulate, and you'd have issues with all that paving. So based on the soils engineer's recommendations, we took it from a, what's called a volume-based design in the county manual, to a flow-based design. So we're, we're meeting all the county standards for cleaning the water. In fact, we're exceeding it by a matter of two, two-and-a-half times with filters that filter all the water, clean it up before it exits the site. And that's the main reason for the paving change, as far as, the soils engineer didn't want to introduce water into the, the, excuse me, the ground below the, the paved areas.
Any questions for the applicant? I have a question, too.
Sure.
So I, my understanding of state law is that you're not allowed to introduce any water off-site. I mean, you have to deal with all the water onsite? And I, I wasn't clear from the plans how that's going to be a
The, the cleaning of the water is done onsite.
But it, it all flows off the site?
It all flows off-site. It all did also. How percolation basins are designed, they're designed to take the first three-quarters of an inch. After that, all the water flows off-site. That's how it's designed. You know, there's very few areas in the county that will allow you to take all the water and keep it onsite for any kind of storm event, over, say, a ten-year storm event. You know, even down by the river where it's granular and sandy, you're not going to be You know, even down by the river where it's granular and sandy, you're not going to be able to keep all the water onsite.
Okay. Mr. Quilisi, you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned the clay soils, and if you introduce water, then sometimes they swell differentially. And you said the pavers would undulate, but a solid layer of presumably concrete would crack. Is that better than having the permeable pavers everywhere?
If you introduce permeable pavers, what's going to happen is you're going to end up with something similar to a dirt road, you know, where you have the ruts where cars drive. And so you'll have the ruts, but there'll be pavers. And that causes all kinds of tripping hazards and just all kinds of issues for the people that are living there.
Well, the reason I ask, you mentioned curb cuts or other, or tripping hazards. I've had to take care of those kinds of problems with concrete cutting on my own driveway. And it seems to me that you're getting into a situation here where rather than undulating pavers, as you refer to it, you're going to have cracked and differentially raised sections of concrete that will provide at least as much of a tripping hazard as undulated pavers. And so I'm, I'm hoping you can convince me that's not the case, but I have that concern.
Sure. And the way you take care of concrete from differentially settling is put reinforcing in it. The reinforcing holds it together. It's not going to, reinforcing does not stop concrete from cracking. Concrete's designed to crack. That's why they have cracked sections designed.
It's why you put the grooves in.
That's why you put the grooves in. And so it won't stop it from cracking, but it will stop it from differential settlement. So that's why you add reinforcing to a paved section.
And I'm ready.
The whole point is, the soils engineer doesn't want water into the sub-bays.
Commissioner Nolan?
Quick question. And I understand there are expansive soils in that area. When did you initially have a soils report done? Did you have one done prior to construction?
The soils report was done when it was, when the project was previously approved with another owner. And then I took over the job after the current owner purchased the project, and I started looking at it, and I started talking to the soils engineer. He says, I never approved a percolation basin. And so the project was approved with percolation basin. And soils engineer could not support that. We have a letter from the soils engineer, I believe, that we've supplied to staff.
Right. I saw that. Yeah. I was just curious about the sequence in that it was discovered, you know, well after you had started construction.
Right.
That's all. But I do understand the expansive soils and what they do. So, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak? I don't have any speakers cards, but willing to listen. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners have any questions or comments, or Mr. Quilisi?
I think, as usual. Before we vote on the resolution, we actually have two resolutions here, right? There's an attachment A resolution and attachment B resolution.
Correct.
And we haven't, and B was the air condo and A was the permeability? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
And again, the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, corrections or amendments to the attachment A, it would be a resolution of planning commission recommending approval on page one of four. And on page two of four, section two, it would be the planning commission hereby recommends approval of design review permit. With those changes, staff does recommend approval.
Okay. I had a couple of other questions. On condition 10, it refers to the expiration, this is, this is attachment B now.
Yes.
Condition 10 refers to approve or expiration of the tentative map. And I was not sure. The tentative map would expire anyway when a final tract map is approved?
That's correct.
Okay. And so basically, it's a three-year fuse on getting a final map done?
That's correct. And because the project is under construction, I would expect that to happen very quickly. But that both the MAP Act and the city code provide for that initial three-year approval period.
Okay. Condition 11 appeared to me to duplicate at least part of, if not all of, condition And I like the words that are in there, but I'm not sure we need them twice.
I believe you are correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
So along with the, with the changes that Mr. Winiger has already given us on the resolution, oh, that's resolution A you were talking about before.
Correct.
But on B, you also made a couple of changes, I think, to recommend approval? Yes. On page two of, oh, excuse me, that's A again.
That's A, yes. But on B, I would strike condition number six.
And continuing on attachment B, condition 12, line two, it talks about post-construction BMPs. I know that acronym as referring to a Soviet battle, piece of battle equipment.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I believe it's a six-wheeled.
Yeah, right. Exactly. And I'm just wondering what it means here. What's a post-construction?
Best management practice.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think that should be spelled out.
I think so.
And condition 12, the second paragraph, talks about a 42.59-foot-wide strip bordering the north side of the property. I don't know where that strip is. I walked by the property the other day along Pearl Street, and that's where the north side is. And the buildings, the L-shaped building that is on the corner of Pearl and Fulton, comes right up next to the sidewalk. So I'm thinking maybe that 42.59-foot strip of land is some part of the driveway, and that's where the pavers are proposed to go? Or is it something else? I don't know what it is. But it talks about the city have an irrevocable offer of dedication for a strip of land on the north side of the property. And at least for the building on the corner, that's going to take in a good chunk of that building. And so I'm just curious what this 12 refers to.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that there was originally an intention to widen Pearl, and at some point, it was going to bridge the flood control channel to the west. This was an issue that came up in the 601 Pearl project.
Okay.
The city does not intend to do that, but nevertheless, there was a wide, a dedication requirement as part of the general plan for the widening of the street. As it indicates in paragraph C, the city does not intend to exercise its rights until the street extension occurs. And as my understanding is that, that is not the intention of the city at this time.
It doesn't seem feasible at this point since there's construction on Fox.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. Condition 14 on the final map, I think there's some words missing in there. Shall provide a recorded copy or, what are we meaning to say there?
Yes, shall provide recorded copy.
And condition 14, bullet four, prior to recording final tract map, and I understand that other part now, great. Subdivider shall provide security in a form acceptable to the city. And I'm curious, security for what? What risk is being mitigated by the proffer of security?
Well, this is a standard condition, and technically, it probably doesn't apply because the off-site improvements, that is, the street roadway improvements are already being built.
They're already there, yeah.
Right, exactly. So, but that would be typically what the security is. It's usually in the form of a CD or a bond, usually, to ensure that those improvements are made.
Or this is another one of those payment in lieu of?
Correct.
Okay. But it looks like here, in this case, it's already been done.
It's a moot point.
Okay. And condition 18, and I forgot to mention this on, I don't know if it was attachment A or if it was the first item. It says, all conditions of Ventura County Fire Prevention Division of the Ventura County Fire District shall be met. And we've had a lot of running around in City Council about whether or not the City Council approves of everything that the Fire Prevention Division wants to do. And I think we should add words at the end of that sentence, to the extent that they apply in the city of Ojai, that gives us, that makes it such that we are recommending to the council that, that this project follow what the council has already approved, which is not everything.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, and staff would endorse that. In the first item, I did not point out condition number 37, which is the same condition. I did add, on the basis of your suggestion, Vice Chairman, that I, we'd introduce the words as applicable to the city of Ojai shall be met. So we would endorse applying those same, that same language in this condition.
Terrific. That's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. I appreciate your comprehensiveness. Chester, you have your microphone on there. Do you want to say something?
No.
Darn.
It's just that, the pavers make sense to me. I'm in the business, and I understand, you know, when you have expansive soil, what can actually happen?
You want to keep the water out of it?
Yeah. It's really, it's, yeah, you want to try to keep water on the property, but there's times where you just can't do it. It just doesn't make any sense. So I just wanted to put my two cents in on that.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Thought you had, weren't you making, weren't you making a motion? You started.
Did I?
You started a motion.
Oh, I thought we were just...
I thought I did a motion on item three.
Maybe not.
There are two, there are two resolutions here I think we probably need to vote on separately. Would that?
That would be our recommendation. Yeah, okay.
So we have an item A and an item B, basically.
You want to do one? I'll do one? I don't care.
Sure. Tell me where the resolution, is that where you're taking it from?
This is, this is attachment A.
The first...
That's, that's the...
Change of paving.
That's the DRP modification, yes.
That's the air condos.
And then recommendations, the first resolution, I don't think they're in sequence, is the subdivision map, and we would request you act on that first.
That's your attachment B?
Yes, tentative tract map.
Okay. Well, I'll do it. I don't care. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution of the planning commission approving tentative tract map 5695, TTM 1701, for the subdivision of one existing parcel into eight condominium parcels and one common area parcel for the property at 611 Pearl Street.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that includes all the modifications?
Yes, as amended during our meeting here, sure. Thank you.
All right. Well, Commissioner Jagiello, you want to try?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve resolution, assuming approval of the design review permit DRP 17-02, and the modification to DRP 13-18 to allow a change in paving material located at 611 Pearl Street.
All right. Any, Commissioner Nolan, you want to second this?
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Thank you. So I think you guys are all through. And I want to say thank you for doing this work. If you note the dates on some of these things, they go way back. I've been on the commission, you know, we've gone through this so many times, it's going to be really nice to see it actually built, so I'm very pleased that you're doing it there. Thank you. All right. Ms. Whitson, thank you for sticking with us all this time, because we're now getting on to item five, yes.
Could I say one word to the view? Thank you for your words with my return system, or some special circumstances where you can.
Ma'am?
Yep. You'd have to come up to the microphone.
Would you come to the lectern? Thank you so much. We want to make sure we hear you. Thank you.
And that was part of why I mentioned in the paper that I was reading from, which you have, that the $60,000, because that would apply to each of my neighbors who would be losing their views. So I just wanted to say there are extenuating circumstances to that. It's not a hard invest rule at all.
When you bought the property, you were charged an extra $60,000 for the view?
No, 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 no. What I said in that was that I have been in escrow for that land twice and fell out, unfortunately, because of errors by the seller. And that was the price that I was willing to pay for that land to remain undeveloped.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item five, the water-wise ordinance. And could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is placed on your agenda at the direction of the City Council. The City Council last year considered on a couple of occasions, information provided from staff regarding potential regulations or policies that the city could adopt that would address water provision and strategies to deal with drought conditions in the city. Your staff report goes into some detail regarding the options. I'll take a couple of minutes to highlight some of those. And there is some background. You're well aware that although California in general experienced a rather wet winter, some of that wetness and precipitation missed the central coast, including our area here. So we weren't the beneficiaries of a lot of the water that was received in other parts of the state. So as a result, we're still in a situation where we need to address issues of water supply. So we've presented in this staff report some strategies that the city could consider implementing to stretch our water budget, as it were. The first one that we've identified is leak detection. This would be a program that would identify opportunities to repair or replace old fixtures that are in existence in structures, both commercial and residential structures in the city. Different cities have addressed this in various ways. One would be to collect fees, assess fees on new development, which could be used to fund fixture replacement in older buildings. California, I mean, I'm sorry, Camrio has such a program. Other cities take a more passive approach and require that developers of new projects indicate that they have provided a switch out of existing, of existing fixtures, plumbing fixtures, in older developments. So the city does not act as an intermediary in that case. It's a direct property owner-to-property owner relationship. Then there are offset programs. And offset programs are usually design strategies that allow new development to essentially result in no net increase in water usage. Sometimes this does require, again, working with other properties or property owners to offset their water usage. But there are different ways to deal with that. Among the questions that I think that need to be addressed in this case is that the city of Ojai is actually part of a larger water-serving utility, and therefore, does it make sense is actually part of a larger water-serving utility, and therefore, does it make sense to do this independently or in conjunction with the utility and so that it can be a district-wide strategy? So, there are those sort of issues. You know, the amount of offset can be determined whether it's one-to-one or something less than that. So, there's those sort of issues. The next issue that we've identified is landscape standards. The city recently modified its, its water, landscape, water efficiency strategies as part of the state's Modified Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. But the city could go above and beyond those minimum requirements of state law, including prohibiting lawns or turf areas and requiring even more stringent water-saving landscape elements. Graywater is another area that there's been some discussion about. We just discussed six-eleven Pearl Street, but in the six-oh-one Pearl Street development, there were consideration of graywater pre-plumbing requirements. And I expect our building official to arrive in a few minutes, and she has a presentation to make to you regarding graywater and how, both the advantages and the challenges of implementing graywater management systems. Retrofitting is a, is a sort of an augmentation or a deviation of the previous issues, but basically would require retrofitting of, again, various plumbing fixtures, whether it's things such as toilets or water heaters, tankless water heaters and recycling systems can be used as strategies to reduce water usage and waste of water, that you don't have to wait and run your water in your shower to get it warm, for instance. And then, there are other alternative management strategies that we've identified. Some of them might be considered rather radical, but it could be going so far as dealing with land uses such as prohibiting bottling plants that use locally-generated water, breweries or wineries and the like. Those are some of the other techniques that could be imposed. There are other forms of building code alterations. Someone mentioned composting toilets. There are other sort of things that could be considered. And then, the last item that we've identified is recycled water. Some communities are able to treat their wastewater to a point where it can be used for landscape maintenance, municipal landscape maintenance purposes. Unfortunately, the location of the treatment plant that serves Ojai is so far downstream that it makes conveyance of recycled water at least somewhat impractical at this point. So, those are the issues that are, that are on the table for your consideration, and we welcome your thoughts and feedback. And again, expect Ms. Moreau to be with us in perhaps the next fifteen minutes. You went through those two items way faster than I thought was going to be the case, so. But she had another commitment this evening, but will be joining us shortly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Winiger. It's the perils of being efficient. Do we have questions for Mr. Winiger?
Yeah, I do. And I think, so, one of the questions here is the jurisdiction or the purview of the Planning Commission, and I think we're Section ten?
Correct.
And by Title ten, and Title nine is the Building Appeals Board. And there's a lot of overlap here in the recommendations. So, I'm just trying to get your input on how you, you know, what you expect from us and the recommendations you expect to get from us and how that would interface with the Building Appeals Board.
Mr. Chairman, good question. And I believe there will be an opportunity for the Building Appeals Board to weigh in here. I wouldn't want to suggest that either body limit their concerns necessarily to those specific issues. This is a general topic of concern in the community, I think, and we welcome input, not only the commission here this evening, but the community as well. So, I don't, I wouldn't suggest you limit your comments to just those that may be governed by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Quilisi?
The City Council, has it requested anything of the Building Appeals Board on the topic of Waterwise?
To be honest, I'm not certain. But I will, I'm, we'll see guidance from the...
Okay, that would be part of my recommendation, is that they, they get at least a second opinion, preferably a primary opinion on building standards?
That would be our intention.
From the Building Appeals Board. I was looking at, at the leak detection. I think if we, if we could do more of that and if we could stop running roof gutter water into the storm sewers or into the sanitary sewers, into the sanitary sewers in particular, and redirect it onto the property that the house occupies, we're going to save ourselves a lot of money as a community because we're adding to the volume of wastewater that the sanitary district has to process when we throw all this rainwater into the sanitary sewers. You mentioned in, in the, under graywater, but in particular, under retrofitting, that by a year from January, all commercial and multifamily residential buildings are required to meet the nineteen ninety-four standards. And for single-family residences, it's only on sale that you're, on the sale of a property that you're required to meet the nineteen ninety-four standards in all the plumbing fixtures? Do I have that right or is there, have I misunderstood something?
That is a good question. And as fate would have it, our building official, Ms. Moreau, has just arrived.
All right.
So, she can answer that type of question as well as, I'm sure she's prepared to make the presentation on graywater at this time.
That's great. Thank you.
So, I'm going to punt.
Can we hear from Ms. Moreau? Did you bring slides or just?
There was supposed to be a PowerPoint presentation. Well, I guess I did. Awesome, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Renee Mario. I'm the building official for the city of Ojai. Matt asked me to prepare a little graywater presentation for you. And it was kind of interesting, as I was going through and preparing this for you, I actually learned quite a bit about graywater myself.
Can we get that TV to work as well?
It was on.
Punched the button harshly. Something. I thought the other one came up on HDMI three, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Amber.
Point it this way? So, graywater is actually rather technical, and there's some design requirements before you get into deciding whether graywater is a good use or an inappropriate use for the structures that you're dealing and with the landscaping that you're dealing with for graywater. So, there's a couple design considerations and things that you should start thinking about when you're thinking about graywater design. There are rainwater catchment systems, which people tend to forget. They usually think of graywater only as sink, drains, laundry, water, that kind of stuff. But graywater catchment can be considered a graywater usage. The elevations on the property are very important because gravity feed is the best solution for graywater. Having multiple graywater zones in your yard, because you don't want all your water going to one area in your yard, it would be way overwatered. In the one project that I know has been considered for graywater, it's a condo complex. So, there would possibly be common area. So, are you going to use graywater for common area as well or only for personal uses, the individual units? And how much landscaping are you talking about using for graywater? So, there's lots of things you have to consider when you're talking about using graywater. The soil type, can it percolate properly? Or is it just going to sit on the top of the soil? Is it really clay-like? Plant types, what are you thinking kind of plants are you going to water with graywater? And the availability of soil saturation. There's some health concerns with graywater. So, let's say you have your sink in your bathroom going to water your yard, and you have a party. Well, the amount of usage and the amount of water that's going to be going out into your yard for your party is much more than your normal usage. Soaps, chemical contamination, stuff that you would wash is now all going into your yard. And if you get too much water, it can daylight, as you call it. Now, you have possible contamination in the day lighting water. Also, let's say it runs off into the stormwater system. Now, you're contaminating surface water. So, if you were planning a graywater system for your yard, you're looking at needing a half a gallon of water per week for each square foot of plant. It's not a lot of water. So, a half a gallon per week, and Ojai, you may need a little bit more because you're a little hotter, but this is the estimates, the information I got for it. So, a half a gallon of water per week for a, per square foot of plant that you're watering.
By plant, you mean landscaped area?
A shrub, a...
Ground cover?
Ground cover, yes.
Trees?
Trees are very good to water. But here, so you would take the area of the canopy, and it's a half a gallon per week per square foot of your canopy. So, once again, still, not a lot of water. The best applications for graywater, trees, shrubs, hedges, evergreen plants. It's not recommended for grass because of the area that you would have to disperse it over, and it's not recommended for vegetables. Fruit trees are okay because the root system can filter out any contaminants, but in vegetables, you're eating the plant. So, it's not recommended for plants. I mean, for vegetables, sorry. Surge volumes, so this is kind of what I was talking about. When you're running your appliances or your fixtures in your house, you get a tremendous amount of surge of water going out into your yard. So, for instance, a washing machine, you have about fifteen gallons per wash. And a bathtub, because you're not talking about the amount of water that's coming out of the fixture, you're talking about the amount of water and how fast it drains. So, the bathtub, you're looking at about forty-five gallons in three minutes coming out of that tub going into your yard. A low-flow showerhead, which we all have, saves water. You're looking at about twenty gallons in ten minutes going out into your yard. A bathroom sink, about four gallons in a minute can drain out of it. And so, when you're planning your yard, you need to plan for about forty-five gallons of surge into your system. So, that means mulching area, if it comes out, so it doesn't daylight. You just don't want the water to daylight above ground. You want it all below ground. Some graywater, it is efficient. I mean, it is a good use of water. Most low-tech systems, you can plan on it using, taking about a third to a half of your total irrigation needs on your property. You would not ask it to provide a hundred percent of the irrigation needs on your property because, for instance, in winter, that's going to change, but your fixture usage is going to stay the same. And that's what is saying graywater doesn't vary per irrigation requirement. Summer, you need more water. Winter, we hope, we need less water. The best and easiest system to install and maintain is a simple laundry-to-landscape system. So, gravity feed, you make sure your washer is located in a place in the house where it can gravity feed out to various plants and shrubs. Easy to use. You just have a little diverter valve so that if you're washing something that has food or other yucky stuff, it would go to the sewer. The good stuff would go out into your yard. You use special soaps in your laundry system. You can flush the pipe out if you need to if it gets clogged with lint and debris. But it's a very, very simple and easy-to-use solution. Obviously, there's positives with graywater. They conserve water use. That's absolutely true. Some of the nutrients in the plants come out through your water. It's good. It reduces the amount of fertilizer you need because you've got nutrients coming from your graywater out into your plants, reduces water cost. Obviously, there's environmental benefits from decreasing wastewater discharge to sensitive bodies of water, which we know we have around here. And you can ensure water demands are met even during the times of drought because you're using your graywater. But of course, with all positives, there's some negatives. So, there's still some health quality concerns with graywater. The books that I read said no one that they know has ever been sick with graywater, but yet, health departments are very concerned about contact with graywater and people getting ill. Unfritted water can cause disease or contamination. Anything other than that laundry-to-landscape system could be very costly to install because it's going to involve pumps. It could involve holding tanks. Cleaning and maintaining those systems could be quite costly to the individual. One thing that nobody really talks about is by diverting the water out of the sewer system, you are diverting the water that cleans and scours the sewer pipes. So, this lack of water flowing down your pipes could possibly give you more blockages. It's an unfortunate side effect to that. Storing graywater, if you were to have a storage system and then have pumps to divert it through various stations in your yard, you're not supposed to store it for more than twenty-four hours because it can grow contaminants. The soaps and stuff that you use, you have to be careful what kind of soaps you use. Salts is a big problem. We know that that's a big thing with groundwater here. The salts getting into the groundwater is damaging to wildlife and the ecosystem. And you can't use graywater for just anything. Like I said, vegetables are not an idea. Lawn is just difficult because of the dispersal of it. So, that is the end of my education on graywater. Did you have any specific questions or thoughts?
Absolutely. Mr. Quilisi? Thank you. A few charts back, you had a kind of a illustration of a system, and it looked like at the end of the pipe, there was what appealed to me as a septic tank.
So, that would, would be more of a containment-type system where the water would flow into a holding tank and then disperse either via gravity or pumped to various graywater stations.
Okay. But a normal graywater system simply diverts the graywater into a perforated underground pipe? Or what?
It's usually a perforated underground pipe, and you lay a mulch bed in it so that the water can seep out into the...
Or gravel around it or something, yeah.
It's usually more of a mulchi type so that the roots of the plants can get in there and get the water. And so, it just, by leaching, basically, it's a modified leach field, for any lack of a better term, leaches out from that perforated pipe, and then the plants can gain the water.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Nolan?
I just had a comment to make, and I wanted to, I've actually designed some graywater systems. And I know in the county of Ventura, we're allowed to have the laundry-to-landscape. There's also a simple system that's allowed. And in that system, you can actually take, of course, your laundry water, your bathroom sinks, showers and tubs, and not your kitchen water or toilet water, and let that go into the landscape. But once again, you're not holding it.
Right.
So, you're not storing it or you're not filtering necessarily or pumping it. I mean, you could filter it. And then, the standard system, which is more complex, that can be very expensive. And that's where you're actually taking the water, you're storing it, you're essentially treating it or filtering it.
Processing it some.
Right, and then pumping it and then back out into the landscape. Right, and then pumping it, and then back out into the landscape. And I, one thing you said that I really do appreciate is that I see the value in gray water, and yes, in some instances, it's not maybe the best solution. But I think it all comes down to designing it correctly, and like you mentioned, knowing your soil types, your conditions, knowing your plant material and what have you. I've been doing it for years, and I mean, it's water you've already paid for. You just, you know, you have to use natural biocompatible cleaning and soap materials, which I've done, it's not a big deal, you don't have to go to a special store to buy, you can go to Costco, or Vons, or what have you. So anyway, I guess, I want to say that I'm generally in favor, but yes, you have to do your homework and make sure, you know, it's going to work on your property, so.
Great, thank you. I want to thank you for a great presentation.
You're welcome.
I think it answered a lot of questions for people, I really appreciate it. Mr. Jagiell, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's kind of what I got from the presentation actually is more of a negative view of gray water than a positive view. Because it's so complicated in a lot of ways to get it right, and expensive to get it right, where really, it's a, it's difficult to do after the fact. And in Ojai, we have not a lot of new construction projects here, where it's a lot easier to incorporate a system in new construction. It just is, just like anything else. And it makes a lot more sense. In these older houses, the idea of having people go where they have existing hearts, I'm just going to the practical aspect of it, where they have already their heartscapes in, and it can do very little, really, to get that water out without having unsightly hoses and above-ground pipes going to areas. It's a good idea, we can talk about how good idea, but it's not very practical, practical as far as water saving goes. So that's just my sense of it. I'm not, I don't, I don't see making that a major part of the water-wise policy to the point where it's going to be some kind of savior, because it won't, you know, in our case. And I know where, on other, on other notes with water saving, there are areas that are easier to do within, or more practical to do in a home, even though they cost money, but they're easier to do. For instance, recirculation of hot water is probably one of the best things you can do to save a ton of water, where a lot of these older houses, they have units now that have built-in recirculation, where you don't have to add another recirculation pipe to the unit, and has the technology to circulate within the existing pipes. I installed one in my home. It saves an amazing amount of water, because it used to take me at least a minute, and a minute watching water go down the drain is like forever, and in your kitchen sink. And when I installed my unit, this unit, yes, it cost me a good amount of money, about $3,000, but the bill, the amount of money I saved, literally, within five seconds, I have hot water at my kitchen sink. So one minute of water going down, I did the math at one time, and I think I was wasting about two to three gallons every time I went to the sink, just to start it up. That really adds up. So there are other things. So back to the gray water, has a certain practicality, mostly, and I'm sure we'll include it, but it really takes a lot to monitor. The chemicals, the things that you put in your washer, in washing machine, all of that makes a sense, and you're dumping all of that out into the soils. It's not as easy as you would want to say. It sounds great, but it's actually more of a complicated system.
Could I just add one more thing?
Sure.
On the laundry-to-landscape system, the County of Ventura does have a standard handout for laundry-to-landscape system. All the building officials in Ventura County got together, worked on this handout, so it is available, and is, I believe, on the city's website, I will verify that, that anybody can install this without permits, that they follow the standard. And that is an excellent, excellent system, and I would encourage anybody who can to install it, they're not expensive to install.
Right, because usually washing machines are on the outside wall of the house, and they have a clean-out right there that makes it easy to do. So I would agree on that aspect of gray water usage.
But this, this still ends up with a perforated pipe underground somewhere in your yard, right?
Yes. Or most likely, it's above ground for a while, because you've got to get it where that exterior wall is to somewhere. And you can look at, just think of your house, where that exterior wall is, where your washer is, and how, where would you get the pipe, and what would you do with that pipe?
Yeah. I live in a 1930 house, and the prospect of repiping every fixture that I could in gray water, bathtubs, kitchen, or bathroom sinks and laundry, is a daunting prospect. But I'd like to do something, because I think it's a good thing. And by the way, on one of your negatives about reduced flow in the sanitary system, right now, those who follow the sanitary district board meetings and all of their reports, will note that the biggest problem they have is too much clean water in the sanitary sewers, not too little. They refer to it as infiltration and something else, it's I and I, and I can't remember what it all refers to. And that is why the sanitary district right now is spending a lot of money, and you'll notice trucks all around town from time to time, they are putting liners in the main sewer lines to, one, stop the infiltration of clean groundwater into the sanitary sewers, and to stop the exfiltration of water that needs to go to the treatment plant from getting back into our soil. So that's their biggest concern at the moment.
Yeah, the water was more for, from the house lateral going to the main line, not actually the sanitary district's line, the clogging happens in the individual properties.
In the laterals, yeah.
Lateral, because there's not enough water coming down to push the solids through.
Ah, okay.
Commissioner Corbin wanted to comment.
Yeah, plumber explained that to me a couple of years ago about gray water, and how you really want your shower water to go clean out your pipes. And it seems to me, I mean, there are probably things that every homeowner can do that makes sense. I have a water filtration system that just cleans itself out and dumps, you know, 50 gallons of water, so I collect it and I water a tree with it. But for the most part, I think what I would like to see us encourage is that, in fact, the sanitary district does use recycled water. And we approach this in a larger format, rather than one toilet at a time. Not saying that that isn't a good thing, but if, if it's, it always amazes me that we're expected to put solar panels on our individual houses, and we, and nobody says to the electric company, "You must provide solar energy in this part of the country", because that solves the problem. So I think that we really have to, have to hit, you have to look at the big picture. And in terms of other things that we can do, you know, nobody should be planting grass now, and landscaping should make sense, and your gutters should have something permeable underneath them, so that the water doesn't go out into the ocean. I mean, there's, those are basic things that we really need to stress, that would really make a difference in our water.
Yeah, good. I have, I just wanted to see if we want to hear from the public. Do you, do people want to speak on anything here? You can come up to the microphone. Thanks. Appreciate it, Renee.
Just a couple of things. It was, it was at least five years ago that Ventura County had, was giving, not giving away, but, but we got at very low cost rain barrels, and I have 10 rain barrels now around my house, and I do keep them maintained, and they're hooked together, and they're quite easy to use, and I can always use rainwater up until, up until, usually through July. And I just wanted to mention, too, that every, every gray water system does not have to be as intricate as you're describing, because, because I know some people have a shower in their backyard, and they use castile soap, and, and it goes on non-vegetable gardens, and it costs them nothing, almost nothing. And so it's, what is legal and not legal? I'm, I'm at the age where I'm thinking to my house, I don't want to do things that are going to leave a problem for my kids, so I don't want to do anything illegal. And yet, at the same time, I have to put in, I want to put in, an outside toilet for, for people who are working there, or for whatever reason, I just need it sometimes. And, and I can't put in a self-composting toilet, because it's illegal. Why is that? I've used them many places, all over this country, all over the world in my travels, I've used them. But Ventura County, Ventura County has fracking, I mean, you know, please do something about the toilets. I mean, I know it sounds petty, but it's not petty for a lot of us. And for my own inside showers, every once in a while, I do have circulating water, but my, to speak to your, to your point on that, one of my plumbers says, well, he has seen houses that you use your circulating water all the time, and it will break up your concrete. My circulating water is in my concrete. And so I only, I can set a timer and, you know, not use it all the time, and then I can use buckets in my shower as part of the time if I want to. I mean, nothing needs to be complicated about it, from my perspective. Thank you for letting me rant.
Thank you very much. Thank you for participating. All right, Commissioner Nolan, thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. I think what we need to look at here is a comprehensive program. So there's something or more than one thing for whoever wants to participate. And it could be a combination of, you know, where the city gets a grant to do, I need to put my glasses back on, excuse me, you know, say like the leak detection program, or to offer low-flush toilets, or what have you. But to come up with that program, and maybe that's, you know, where do you get the funding? And it could be additional funding from permits that come in. I think that's great. The same with the offset program. But I think with the gray water, like, I'm not, I'm not saying everyone has to do it, I am a proponent. But I think we should include it, because the laundry-to-landscape is so easy to do. And not only the County of Ventura, but also other water districts. I, I think I mentioned before in the past, I used to teach these classes for, through the Metropolitan Water District, and we did it for water companies, LA, Ventura, and Santa Barbara Counties. And all the water companies that I happened to attend and teach the classes for, they were all promoting the gray water as a means of conservation. So for instance, I know some projects that I've worked at in Malibu, they actually were pushing them to do what we do call a standard gray water program, or system, but that was for new construction, and I know that's more costly. But the laundry-to-landscape and the simple system is not that expensive. And if somebody is diligent, I have no problem with worrying about chemicals, it's super easy as far as I'm concerned. But I think, once again, a comprehensive program, so that there's something for, hopefully everybody, would be able to, makes the most sense to me. And I just want to make a couple of comments about, like, the landscape standards, because I did work on the modified water-efficient landscape ordinance for several years for the city. And they actually do recommend gray water. They haven't said you shall at this point, but over the years, they've always had that recommended in their guidelines. And the discussion came up when I was working on that ordinance, do we want to make it more strict? And one of the things we had talked about was requiring gray water at the time. But I just throw that out there, as of 2015, they have tightened up what you can do with your water. And this is for new construction, of course, projects that are being renovated, they require permitting. So not, you know, some single-family resident is just doing their landscape, not pulling permit, they won't have to comply. But so far, I feel like it's, it's pretty good, and it's pretty darn tight, as far as the water use on it. So whether or not we want to say no lawns, something else I wanted to throw out was, you could say no high-water-use lawns. You can actually put in alternative plant material and have a lawn that would be medium to low water use, that doesn't require the same amount of water. So I think it just needs to be a look at, in a little more depth, rather than just cutting something like that out. But I'm definitely willing, if we were asked, to look at that deeper, further, to be a part of that. So that's just kind of a general comment, and that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. So Mr. Winiger, what, what kind of output do you, are you expecting from us this evening?
Well, I think it's quite wide open. If there are, I think, strategies that you think are just taken off the table because they're infeasible, we'd like to know that. If there's something in particular that, that you would recommend to the council that they provide direction to staff on as a priority, those are the sort of things we're interested in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jagiell?
On the composting toilets, I get a lot of questions about that. Is there any law against someone buying a composting toilet, putting it in their yard and using it?
Yeah.
There is?
Well, I asked.
There's an exact law somewhere?
Actually, the building official could tell us.
If you give me two seconds, I'll run down to the office and grab the plumbing code and see.
Okay, I'd like to know that, because I am not aware of one.
I asked at this desk.
Yeah, I'm not aware that there's an exact code for composting, against composting toilets, and how you would enforce that anyway. If you bought one, you stuck it out in your shed, and did your business, who, you know, who monitors that? And I'm just, I'm just curious, because a lot of questions come around composting toilets, and why you can't have them. And I'm not sure I've ever seen a, you know, an agency, you know, that has distributed a leaflet or anything that suggests that, you know, you cannot do it. Now, I understand we have not included them in our code as a legal thing to do, so as you submit plans, it's, you cannot get that approved, because it is not certified. And it's not a certified appliance, what is that, the, what's that certification that you need for certain appliances? Not ANZI, there's another one. UL, yeah, the UL. It doesn't have a UL certification, so therefore, it's, you know, it goes before the building and safety, and they just kick it out, because they want to see a UL. Now, I've dealt with Ventura County, where they are open to looking at different fixtures. And we did that with the fireplaces and chimney caps, and there was a bunch of things that we, I've been part of through the years with Ventura County, where you, we finally had, you know, when we were able to get the manufacturer to create this UL, to be able to uphold the standard that they were able to do. They voted on it within the Ventura County, and then they accepted it. And it became an acceptable thing to use. So composting toilets come up a lot, and so what did you find out?
So I don't actually know what a composting toilet is. Does it have any water in it at all?
No.
Okay, so here's the wording in the plumbing code. It says, "Water closets having an invisible seal, or an unventilated space, or having walls which are not thoroughly washed at each discharge shall be prohibited."
Okay. Yeah, that's a good one.
So I think that that would eliminate the composting toilets.
That means if you don't have water flowing out of the toilet tank to wash the bowl, you can't have the fixture.
Correct.
Electricity is involved.
I don't think the electricity is the issue.
So the next question, though, I'm not, so I'm not questioning, you know, let's, let's say that that is true. So they have a toilet on site, they have a home, but they purchase another compostable toilet. Is there a law against purchasing a compostable toilet and doing your business in it? I mean...
So according to the plumbing code, a toilet or water closet would require a permit. And so in...
A toilet, or, okay, so that's, so you're using it as...
Yeah, so to install it would require a permit, and that type of fixture is not allowed. So you wouldn't be able to get a permit for it, technically, what you installed...
But you couldn't, no one can prevent you from buying one.
No one can prevent you from buying one.
And sitting up. So, okay.
But in order to hook it up, would require a permit.
Right, but hooking, there's no hookup, so that becomes an interesting thing. So the reason I'm going through this is because compostable toilets is part of this proposal here, and it's, it comes up a lot. And somehow, we have to kind of figure out...
I would say technically, according to the California plumbing code, they're not allowed.
Right. And I could see that, according to the code. So we have it in here as a, as a, you know, as an item, permit composting toilet if applicable, if applicable. if applicable, by the health and safety standards, you know, which are, they-
Which, which right now, it's not.
It's not.
With SLRI.
Yeah. So, these are, these are, that's just one of those issues. I'm not sure whether we keep it in, even though I would like to pursue that, and have that discussion in a better way, because the technology is getting better and better and better at that particular-
Well, maybe that, that's one of those experimental things, like we talked about.
Right. We're, we're working on the Sustainable Committee, and maybe that's one of those things that we can help introduce. But then that goes to that Title X, Title IX thing, because that's a fixture, right? And that goes right to the plumbing code, and is that the purview of the Planning Commission?
But it's not plumbed.
Well, it's still a fixture, and if we want it to be part of the plumbing code, to be acceptable, then it would be a Title IX consideration.
Or maybe it's not a plumbing fixture, because it doesn't have water.
It's a garden fixture.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You're creating-
It's a fertilizer.
You're creating compost, is what you're doing. You're creating compost, yeah.
Yeah, it's a fertilizer.
Commissioner Powers had some, some wisdom to add to this.
Well, you know, there's micro and macro conversations. And I like what Commissioner Corbin said, that, you know, to look at the bigger picture rather than individual homes is really, really important. In terms of, you know, central water recycling areas, there could even be larger systems that capture rainwater harvesting. I suggest, if people are interested in that, to look at the, a book called Rainwater Harvesting. There's two volumes that have amazing community designs and neighborhood designs in it. In terms of composting toilets, and, and, you know, the way I look at refuse is, nature knows how to take care of stuff. Plants knows how to filter everything. There's a lot of countries that feed their fruit trees black water. I'm not sure if it's because of financial interests, of sanitary districts, and money to be made through water districts, that, things that are really natural in a lot of countries are composting toilets. You know, I, I knew, I'll say this, because they don't live here anymore, I knew a home on the East End where he had a family of four, and he used to just dig a hole in his backyard, and there was a, you know, movable bamboo fence, and, you know, they would, they would compost every, they would do the yearn in one area, and the feces down the hole, and they would cut, put dry leaves, and then they would plant a tree. And they would dig another hole. And he had the most mature food forest there that I've ever seen. Like, it was the most mature permaculture plot in Ojai that I had seen at the time. This was a dozen years ago. So, I don't know if we'll ever loosen up enough to really, like, let nature run its course, when it comes to our human interface with nature. But I hope we can become a little open-minded, in terms of compost toilets and our community designs of what we do with our refuse and water recycling. UL approved. I used to manage a property that had incinerator toilets, and they're UL approved. And it had a heating out, no water, they were legal, heating element, it burns everything, turns to ash. There wasn't a lot of odor from it at all. And, and then you just dump the ash out around trees or in your compost bin. And, you know, I, I managed a property that had three of those, and it was perfectly legal. So that's another way to go.
I wonder how they got around the, the plumbing code on that one?
Maybe it's an electrical fixture.
It is electrical, and it's UL approved, and there's no water. But they're legal. So, and that was in, you know, that was in unincorporated Ojai, so, that was in Ventura County, but they were legal. Yeah.
Sure. Come on up to the microphone again.
If you're a meat eater, you're going to have bacteria, two different bacterias that are pathogens if they get in your groundwater. So, so my pets, I actually got containers, a system from Canada, where, you know, dogs and cats eat meat, and so they're going to have E. coli, and, and one other serious one. And so, so I ferment theirs, and then I can dump it anywhere once it's fermented. But for people, that's the only thing you have to be aware of, is if you're a meat eater or not, and then you have to go to a little more trouble if they are. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Are we, do you have enough information to proceed here, Mr. Winiger?
I think so.
Yeah? Yeah, Mr. Quistler?
Thank you. I, I am in favor of leak detection. Offset programs, I have a real hardship with. I, I categorize authoritative discussions as truth, or lies, or damn lies, or statistics. And it seems, and that's in descending order of badness. And it seems to me like offset programs fall into the statistics area. It's, it's like liar's poker. You say, "Well, I'm going to do all this bad stuff over here, but I promise you that someone, somewhere else, will do something equally good to balance all the bad stuff that I'm doing." And, and I don't, I don't see those kinds of arrangements as being either enforceable or probably even true at the outset, in terms of intentions. And, and, and so I'm generally not in favor of offset programs. The rest of it, particularly all the stuff that falls under gray water and retrofitting, I would, I would rather see the city recommending mandatory pre-plumbing and recommending retrofitting rather than requiring it. We have, we have in Ojai a larger percentage of senior citizens than any other place in the county. And so we have a lot of people that live here on fixed incomes, and requiring them to retrofit all their plumbing fixtures could be a real problem for some folks. And it causes, it, it causes potentially financial hardships, and if you want to overcome that financial hardship with waiver requests and stuff like that, that costs more. And, and so I think that, that a recommendation, followed up by the fact that the, that the state law says, in particular on toilet fixtures, that if you make changes, you have to do certain things. If you sell your property, you have to do certain things. And come January 1st, 2019, no matter what, you have to do certain things. I think that's probably enough of a stick right there. And in the meantime, I think it'd be a good idea if the city recommended this stuff, but not require it in advance of the state law coming down with the mega hammer on all of us anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
I do want to encourage, if it's not already being done, that research be done on what grants are available, other than swapping toilets out for seniors, for, you know, just in general, like a very comprehensive research done and data collected on, on available It mentioned breweries. I would, I think some conditions need to be put on new businesses that are going to be using an exorbitant amount of water, and I'm not sure how to put that in place, but it's my recommendation that some conditions be put in, that if, beyond, beyond offsets on the property, that there's conditional use, how much water is actually being, being used. I'm only using breweries, because we had one come before us, and, and it was mentioned in this conversation. And there are breweries, there's one in San Diego, that their beer is made from recycled water. In fact, it's made from wastewater. And it has a fun name, but they're in San Diego. If you just Google "beer made from recycled water," they'll come up. But it's functioning. Yeah, it's a regional microbrewery. So I think some conditions need, need to be put on new, new businesses. Any retrofits on businesses, I know there aren't that many in, in Ojai. And in terms of offsets, yeah, I think I may agree with new building that just have them designed in a way that offsets aren't needed. But maybe for businesses that already are in place, maybe even agriculture that's in place, that isn't doing everything they can in terms of emitters, or creating bio swales to sink water or whatnot, to have something in place that encourages them. I don't know what it looks like, or, or some offset they do. Because I know some corporations, bigger corporations do that. You know, the Air Pollution District of Ventura, I think, has a endowment from 3M or something like that, where, because they pollute so much, there's money available for grants and things like that.
Commissioner Nolan?
I would also recommend that, wherever this goes, that we have an educational component, and even a checklist at the counter, you know, at the city. So somebody could go in, and they could see things that are recommended, or if we do have a grant or funding for something, or if we decide to change a code or an ordinance, that's kind of all listed, so somebody could access that. Could be on our city website, and, because I know, it's interesting, like, it seems so obvious, but I, invariably, I have people that come up and say, "I wish I knew about a program," or, "I don't know what to do, I don't know where to start." And just by us being there as in providing education, I think is super important.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, picture tells a thousand stories in that regard, and I was going to suggest that we do a little bit more work on this, and prioritize the most costs, the most, the items that save the most water. The, the visual, can you imagine a visual that went from priority in a chart that said, if you were to change your one, you know, your toilet out, this is the net effect? You know, people need to translate some of these ideas to real-life reality, and I could see a very simple graph that says composting, composting toilets, recirculation of water, gray water washing machines. And we, we know how many residents we have in Ojai, you know, we have approximately 2,500. And, you know, it's easy to do a math and a calculation, and really get in, and that's part of the educational proponent, but it's also, we'll emphasize where we should put our efforts. You know, where, where's the most cost-saving, where's the, the water going to be saved? You know, where are we going to get our, the best net result from our efforts? And it's, and it's probably a pretty easy exercise, because it's all math. Now, it does take somebody to go and do this work, but we're working on it right now, and I would love to see the, these items prioritized in net savings of water. Kind of a chart like that. Otherwise, otherwise, it's, it's kind of like, there's almost too much to focus on here, and, and people will do nothing. And so that's my suggestion, and I think that'll be very helpful to move it forward.
I love the idea of the city being a resource for people in terms of information about things. Also, I, I like the idea of making recommendations to people about what to do. I've been really disappointed in my neighborhood lately. There have been several houses that have been rebuilt, basically. Contractors have come in, bought the house fairly cheaply, and tore out all the landscaping. I was all excited, I was, "Oh, good, they're going to put in drought-tolerant landscaping." No. They put in a big chunk of turf in the front yard, and then they have a little bit of drought-tolerant stuff around the edges, and I was just really disappointed. I thought, boy, I wish there was a way we could say, "Look, it's so much easier to do a drought-tolerant landscape around here than it is to do conventional landscaping." Well, I think we should move on. Future agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, you have a couple of items scheduled for August 2nd. The first item is a, an event facility proposed for Ojai Valley Inn. The second item is concept review for the, the building where the Dry Cleaners is currently located on Ojai Avenue. We don't have any items scheduled yet for August 16th. We are canceling the September 6 meeting due to lack of quorum. You're scheduled to have a joint meeting with the City Council on September 12th, at their regular scheduled meeting, and I'd like to suggest that if commissioners have ideas for topics, they share those with the chair, and I'll have a conversation with Chair Merk at a later date regarding possible items for discussion.
Yeah. Commissioner Nolan?
I just wanted to comment that on August 2nd, I'm going to have to recuse myself for the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa project. And I noticed that we have two absent commissioners, so I just wanted to make sure there's going to be a quorum.
Thank you.
And mention that ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Winiger, I had a question. I noticed the pending projects list has all of a sudden gotten really short. There used to be six or eight items on there. Do we understand that all those items have been resolved after being on the list for years and years? What is the status?
We're making some pretty good progress on things. I'll, I'll investigate that, but-
Yeah. Specifically, I was thinking, the Emerald Iguana used to be at the top of the list.
I'm sorry?
The Emerald Iguana.
Oh, okay.
They were, I don't know what the issues were, but it was on there for months, years, years. And it would, it'd be wonderful if all those things are resolved, but we haven't seen them.
Well, certainly look at it.
All right. Thank you. Next is our planning commissioner reports. Yes, sir.
I just want to mention that I, I may very well be absent for the August 16th meeting.
Okay.
I, I have a question, if that's all right? I, I will be absent on August 2nd, I'm still traveling that day. But I thought I heard you say that the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa Barn Project had something to do with an event?
It's an event center, essentially.
Oh, an event center, okay. And are these, are these, that and Topa Topa Brewing, that's where the cleaners is?
Correct.
So they're converting it from a dry cleaning establishment to a brewery?
The Dry Cleaners will relocate within the building, but they'll be oriented to Montgomery.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
Okay. And are those one-offs? They appear on August 2nd, and if they're approved, then we don't see them again?
No, no.
Then you just see building permits?
The action on the Ojai Valley Inn would be your, the commission's approval of the project. The Topa Topa is a concept review, so it would come back for-
Ah, okay.
For a formal review at some point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Quistler, did you have a report on the July 11th City Council meeting?
Heaven help us, yes. Under item seven. The, the City Council convened at 7:00. They adjourned about 11:30, and they had to cut off introduction of new topics at 10:30, which means they only got to about half of the agenda as it was, and the meeting still went on for an hour after they didn't take any new topics on. I'll just pick up a couple of the major things. There was a discussion of the second units and accessory dwelling units, which, as you know, the, the commission here has dealt with and sent recommendations on. There was an agreement to consider tiny homes and tiny homes on wheels, which are not homes, they're trailers, separately from ADUs. So that kind of cleared underbrush from the City Council, considering all of that. There was a motion to accept our recommendation as amended. It passed the first reading. But then there was some clarification of the definition of living area as habitable space. You remember, we talked about 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the primary structure? And Dr. Wireg got that clarified, and that passed. Then there was an item that did not come up in our staff report, and we did not consider, and that was increasing the ADU height from 15 feet. I'm not sure why that was in there. I don't think any of us ever looked at it. To 24 feet, which is the same as a primary residence, and that passed. They added the commercial and the BP, what's that?
Business and professional.
Business and professional as permitted zones for ADUs. That, again, was something that we did not consider in making our recommendation, and that passed. A motion to eliminate a deed restriction regarding owner- A motion to eliminate a deed restriction regarding owner, owner occupied land failed. So the deed restriction remains. If you have an ADU, there'll be a deed restriction that talks about what you can do with that deed restriction. But in terms of making a hardship exemption to the owner occupier rule, it's, it's now going to be ministerial, not requiring our approval. Was considered by most to be kind of a personal item and not something necessarily appropriate to a public hearing. There was a motion to retain the 10,900 minimum lot size in residential and 7,500 in VMU as minimum lot size. That failed for lack of a second. A motion to restrict ADUs maximum sizes to 600 square feet also failed for lack of a There was some discussion of city-owned property that could have affordable housing. That's gone to a future agenda, just like the tiny homes business. And then there was a motion to direct the planning commission to consider a code change to establish lot coverage standards in R-04, R-02, and R-01 zones, which currently have no lot coverage standards. And that motion passed. So we will be getting, as a commission, that direction from the city council to, to recommend lot coverage standards for those zones that currently have none. Then there was the wonderful leaf blower regulation and enforcement. The current ordinance bans gas leaf blowers in residential areas, allows gas and electric blowers in commercial areas with restrictions, either noise or time or, or whatever, and no requirements on licensing and certification. That's the current state of the code. There has been a discussion of blowers with a number of stakeholders. And as I understood it, there is a new, a demonstration of new blower technology already done and another one scheduled for July 18th, which is yesterday. And I don't know if it happened or not.
I think it did.
It did, okay, very good. There was a motion to replace the outright ban on leaf blowers with limited hours, noise limits, allowing both electric and new high-efficiency gas blowers in commercial areas, electric only in residential, plus licensing and certification of the equipment and the operators. And that was reconsidered, but I don't think it ever, oh, there was a motion to table that motion and that failed. So I'm not sure where that stands right now in terms of consideration by the council. There was a motion to prohibit gas blowers in commercial areas. That was withdrawn. There was an amendment to allow only electric blowers in residential. That passed. And there was an amendment for 7:00 in the morning to noon operation hours in commercial zones of high-tech blowers only. That was not voted on. I cannot explain that. But the final motion as amended did pass. No, I'm sorry, it failed three to two. And so, as one council member said, we are still where we were five years ago. Except that since July 1st, the ban on gas blowers in residential areas is theoretically now being enforced with our lonely, part-time compliance officer. There was some discussion, sort of as, as an extended public communications area, discussion of other topics. Motion for reaffirmation of a list of tasks as assigned by city council in the past to the BAB. And I, I know that other meetings have gone on and the BAB will be getting a more definitive and more rigorously enforced list of things to do. And since we have talked about overlap between ourselves and the BAB, I think at some point we will probably find ourselves in whole or in part pulled into meetings with the BAB to make, to make jointly considered recommendations to city council. Let me see. There will be, on a future agenda, an item for a $25,000 grant to SeaFrog, I think you all know SeaFrog, to support Ojai efforts with respect to the Ventura County General Plan. It was characterized as like the Stop the Trucks effort, but that is reimburse expenses capped at 25K. That has not yet been voted on, so we don't know if that's going to happen. Another one that I thought, thought was interesting, Ventura County Transportation Commission has designated $14 million for environmental impact reports around widening US 101 from Highway 23 in Thousand Oaks to Highway 33 right down here. Some of it looks like it'll be easy, some of it, like where 126 and 101 verge, looks like it'd be really hard. But they have designated $14 million for, for EIRs to go look at that. And I think that's probably, oh, one last item. Gold Coast Transit and the VCTC are doing a tri-annual review of public transit fares. At present, I guess this is by state law, public transit fares, like for the trolley or the bus, the Gold Coast Bus Line. They are supposed to cover at least 20% of the cost of operating the system. The trolley at this point, the last I heard, it was around 12, meaning that for every dollar that goes in the fare box, there's $7 worth of taxpayer money from the city that goes in the fare box. VCTC is trying to finesse a 15% rate with some kind of blending. Even that is currently beyond the reach of the trolley system here in town. And my personal expectation is that there's going to be a fare increase. So, end of report, sir.
Thank you very much. Was there a MAC meeting, Chester?
There was, and unfortunately, Bill, did you attend that?
Yes, I did.
Well, I would, you know, Bill paid a lot of attention to that and he's quite informed on the general plan conversation, so I would defer to Bill if he can give us an update on that. He would, he would be better than...
Well, we're about ready for our city council liaison report anyway, so...
Yeah, and, and sure, I guess I'm sort of the substitute for tonight. If, if it's okay, I'll just launch into that and include the MAC, if that's okay, sure?
Great.
Okay. Yes, I attended the MAC meeting and it was a great turnout. It was about 40, 50 people, probably the biggest MAC meeting, meeting I've ever attended. And the issue, well, first of all, it started out, one of those reports as to why they can't get the beacon flashing, casitas, pedestrian crossing going. And it was one of those government moments, right? "Well, we almost had it ready to go, but the electric service box got vandalized and so now we have to arrange to get that repaired. And we think we might be able to get it repaired and get it working by September." And you just kind of put your head in your hand and going, "Right, private sector had it vandalized and we're going to wait 90 days to fix it and get back on schedule?" It was one of those things where you just kind of go, you know, "What?" Anyway, just my own editorial comment. And moving on to, the meeting was about the area plan update and the Ventura County General Plan update and the, and the structure of how the area plan works within that. And I would say that in general, everyone there was extremely concerned over the representation of, "Well, we're not really doing updates to area plans. We're only going to be updating the overall general plan and then rendering the area plans consistent and eliminating redundancies." And those kinds are very, for people in the Ojai Valley, worrisome phrases. Because it almost became a matter of, "Well, we're not really doing our Ojai area plan updates except for taking things away from the area plans to render them consistent with the overall county plan." Well, what do you mean, "taking away"? And why isn't there sort of a visioning by community, you know, as expressed by area plans? And are you really saying all the priorities for each community as represented by the area plan are going to be the same as the county as a whole? And they kept referring to count, community as being Ventura County as a whole, as opposed to the communities defined by the area plan. So if you're asking for a motivation of why we're going to be considering working with, in an advocacy way, looking out for the Ojai Valley as a whole through SeaFrog or through retaining other specialist attorneys for the entire issue, that's why. Because when they start talking about consistency, and if that means consistency in air quality standards across area plans, that means we lose one of the major bulwarks that we have against sprawl development in the Ojai Valley. That kind of thing is why there was a big turnout and a lot of very sensitive people and a lot of tedious discussion between members of the community as defined by the Ojai area plan, I know our community, and the members of the Ventura County planning staff. So that was a, an interesting discussion. And it's unfortunate that all these meetings aren't recorded.
Totally.
And allowed to be, you know, you, I get increasingly frustrated with these public agencies in this day and age with the city ready to help. If, you know, with our PEG funds, if they, you know, we made the offer and these things just go into the ether, they're evaporated and they're not available for viewing later on. And the same thing with the sanitary district, the water, community, Casitas Municipal Water District, the MAC, they ought to be recorded. They should be videotaped. It was an interesting discussion. I, I'm a little long-winded, but it was, it was an interesting situation. It connects to what we're going to be doing Tuesday night on taking up the SeaFrog proposal. Is that a question or...
I just, it reminded, your discussion of, of pulling things back into the overall plan reminded me of the old joke about a man who's standing with one foot in a bucket of ice water and one foot in a bucket of boiling water. And he says to himself, "Well, on average, I'm pretty..."
Right.
You know, "I'm pretty comfortable."
And I would say the antenna are up in this...
That's what's happening with this.
About, about the, is the structure going to go to that kind of result by, in effect, watering down the primacy of the area plans that is, you know, currently in, in place with the Ventura County? We're talking about adopting the new general plan go to 2040. And given the large amount of unincorporated area and the fact that we are the incorporated area as a city within the sphere of influence and the area, area of interest and the sphere of influence, I think it's an appropriate role personally for the city to consider because we are sort of the, you know, the, the lead agency for looking at planning advice for this, for the, for the valley as a whole, you know, according to LAFCO standards. And also, if I might say, you know, the city put some resources, some taxpayer dollars into basically giving Golden State a hard time with their regulatory proceedings and environment. And I think maybe had some effect in convincing Golden State that it's just not worth staying here anymore. You know, and we got a great, I don't know if you saw the news today, but the tentative judgment came down, about $2.7 million, just under, for getting the playhouse going.
All right, good.
As well as some other, check the Ojai Valley News website. Got posted today. So there's hope on the horizon for a playhouse. And I think it's, but I do, I think the city had a role in making, you know, expressing the community in concrete and specific ways of, "Just please leave, it's, it's worth your while just to not be here anymore. You know, we don't want you." And it, you know, it worked. Clamont didn't do it, we did. You know, it's just something to be proud of. So that was the MAC meeting. I have a couple other things to mention, if that's okay, and then, you know, everyone, this is late, I know. Yeah, leaf blower, bottom line, there's no change in the existing ordinance. Except that we've, we still have in place, we're enforcing it now. There's no enforcement suspension. And where we go from here, I don't know, but that's the current legal status. And Mr. Shapiro, by the way, provided a Santa Monica app demonstration of where the city, you can download a lap from the city, an application from the city website in Santa Monica on your phone and go around, if you see somebody using a gas blower, you take their picture and it uploads and it has a GPS tag on it and a time and all kinds of things. And he's advocating that we'd use that as an enforcement tool in the city. I don't know, that's, that'll be a matter of whether that's snooping on people or not.
It won't.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, he, he, it almost was a little moment of, I was wondering if it was going to go viral because he came up with his mask and his, you know, and anyway. On the, I just wanted to clarify about the, the leaf blower. All right, we, we talked for 90 minutes and ended up, no change. On, I wanted to make a comment because it's a personal opinion. I want to say this as a one member of council. Very important for me to reiterate that. Kathy Nolan exactly knows what I'm talking about. There's kind of an elephant in the room when it comes to stormwater retention and aquifer replenishment, and that is the fact of where does all that water go? It gets to city right away. It's either on Ventura County Flood Control District right away or city right away. That's where that water goes, collected, gets moved in. So why aren't we looking at incorporating all opportunities for stormwater retention in our streets program? Why aren't we applying complete streets principles? You know, both in terms of traffic calming, handicap ramps, stormwater retention, et cetera, all those complete streets principles, why aren't we, that's where the high value is to cost. And frankly, I'm not, so far, I'm, I have, I don't have majority opinion with me on this. In terms of enforcing those principles in our street overlay program, I think it's important. Because if we're looking at things that work and have effect, there you go, in terms of engineering our, our streets to also be stormwater retention structures. That's very successful. So anyway, that's a personal thing with me and that's why I'm going to be discussing that point of view at the Tuesday night city council meeting when the street overlay program is up, where we did get a majority opinion about a resolution to apply complete streets principles according to the code. And by the way, you have some jurisdiction over this. Kathy knows about it. I've sent this to Kathy, I think she shared it with the chair. If there's a, if there's a dispute as to whether or not a handicap ramp is a structure or not, that's for council to decide. If it is a structure, you have some review jurisdiction over that, as my reading of the code. Of course, you know, we'll all debate that. But we've been kind of ignoring the complete streets principles aspect of our code right now in the last few cycles. And I'm, I personally think that needs to change. That's my opinion. And then in terms of, yes, in terms of water-wise, get out of the way of people to do the right thing if we can and, 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 and look at high, high benefit cost approaches. You know, things like, yeah, I mean, you shouldn't be putting your gutter water in this, in this, in your sewer.
Educate and encourage.
Educate and encourage. And I just, I fully agree with the general sense that I observed. But any other questions? I, I may have missed something. I tried to take notes here.
Any questions for Mr.?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting.